Cool.
The way Curriculum Night is ready to let him go, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we're gonna do some adjustments to the agenda. We're gonna have, we're gonna do an action matter of 7.1 first, which is to discuss an action for the local boards on Act 46 participation. And then there are no other adjustments to the agenda other than we do not have an executive session. And does anybody else have anything to add? No? So, we do have CBU board members here who are Shelburne residents. And this is to have them included while we just discuss a few things about Act 46. So, the Act 46 committee has been meeting now. I think we've been meeting for, I think we've had two of our larger meetings and then numerous subcommittee meetings. And the issue came up of a forum on how to get information out about Act 46. And one of the suggestions was, why don't we do it in conjunction with the local budget forums? So, when Shelburne does its local budget forum in November, and I think the date off the top of my head is November 13th? Is that real, Mel? But, uh... Thought that might be here, it's not here. We would, we would do the budget forum and discuss the budget. And then, in a separate, totally separate meeting with a separate agenda, we would do an informational meeting on...
10.
November 10th, okay. We would do an informational meeting on Act 46. This meeting would have a clearly articulated agenda with a known different start time of, you know, half hour or an hour later. It would focus on the basics of Act 46, which is the overview timeline, and then a chance to collect questions and concerns. The meeting would be hosted by the local board chair, which would be myself, two or three other community members, two or three other committee members that can or cannot be from Shelburne. And just the note that some folks at the meeting may not be Shelburne residents, but they're members of the committee that have a certain expertise, that they would bring that to the, to the meeting. Some folks were very touchy about other towns people, other towns presenting in their meeting. I don't think we have a problem with that. If anybody does, you can let me know. So, um, I'll just get an action to have this separate, if I could get an action to, or get a motion, sorry, to have this in conjunction with our budget forum?
So moved.
Seconded.
Second, any discussion?
I think it's a great way to combine and attract multiple crowds to these things, which are often difficult to get people to, so it's a, sounds like a good idea.
Any comments?
On the Vermont School Board meeting I went to in San Olomans earlier this month, there was a lot of information we can get from them. And I specifically asked director to put together some general overview of information that we can share with all the constituents. So, see if they can come through for us on that.
Yeah. Yeah. There's a communication committee that's going to, we discussed this in the CSSU meeting, you were there. But we're trying to unify all of our communications out of the committee so that everybody knows what the timeline is, what the actions of the committee are, and, and what the pathway is to this. And, and that way, everybody's reading from the same sheet of music, so.
Dave?
Yeah?
Uh, what, um, do you wanna tell what different committees there are? 'Cause I was impressed with the thoroughness of all the angles, the communication, and the, the multiple committees that I think are subcommittees.
Just to clarify, the two communications committee, so this is myself and Andrea are one, and that's the overall communication, not just related to the Act 46. So, you're talking about a communications committee that's...
We're talking about a communication subcommittee of Act 46, yeah.
And actually, this most recent article, I don't know if it came out in this Shelburne News, we did an introductory article on, you know, Act 46 and kind of the background and what, what some really...
I respectfully disagree with that article on, that it was a background article. I think it was sort of an op-ed on the law, and I think it would have been... I was surprised, that was the first communications article that was not sent to any of us. It just appeared in the paper. And I, I really think that that article should have come out through the committee. You know, uh, I don't really think it had a lot of facts in it about the law and the pathway. And, so I, I hope that in the future that we could see those articles before they go out. But yeah, referring to the communications subcommittee for Act 46, we also have a finance subcommittee, which is looking at anticipated tax implications, assets and liabilities distributions. We have a governance subcommittee. There's 13 articles within the law that each one of them needs to be addressed. I love, I think the, the first 10 are, what's the name of your school? What's the address of your school? What's the, uh, what is the population of your school? And I think everything is crammed into the 13th article, which is, how are you gonna govern? So, uh, it's kind of interesting. I think those are the, is that, did I miss one? Those are the ones that are noted here on the...
The three we saw and heard.
Yeah. And, you know, even the communications subcommittee seems to have the biggest, you know, front load 'cause we're trying to figure out not only what we're gonna communicate, but how we're gonna communicate it. Through newspapers, we have a website. And, um, you know, it's always funny talking about Twitter and Facebook at a school board meeting, but we're gonna try and do that as well. So, communicate as much as possible. One thing I, it was Polly who said at the CSSU meeting, like, how are we gonna, how are we gonna educate folks that don't use Twitter and Facebook? And I think that Shelburne News is the best way to get that out. When we did our survey, that's what we found out in the survey, that most people like to hear it in Shelburne News. And so, that's why we keep linking all of their articles to everyone who asks us about our bond issue. So, um, so if there's no other questions?
I just think the consistency with all the, the, the pre-K8 schools and CBU is, is really important and an effective method, and, and the subcommittee, some, it, it's a good thing, from me, my perspective.
Yeah.
Cool.
So, all those in favor of having a forum in conjunction? Taylor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, we'll, we'll do, I, um, I think there was a request to do the forum, the Act 46 forum beforehand. So, we'll do that first at the meeting, and then we'll do the budget forum, so, so we'll just move with that. So, now, you guys are free to go back to your CBU meeting.
Okay.
Thanks a lot guys.
Can I turn to Carrie?
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
So, I assume that our audience today is presenting on summer and extended learning opportunities and is not here to talk in support of the bond issue. So, we will skip to the presentation, 4.0. And you move over to this one.
I will rotate.
We might have to drive really quick.
Yep.
I think this is just a wee bit different. We had some data that was later.
Thank you.
And while Devin is doing that, I will just go ahead and kind of queue up the presentation here. So, we're doing a presentation on all of our summer schools. And Devin Morrell, who is handing out papers right now, and Sue Schaefer, who is behind the scenes there, are our summer school teachers. Devin is also a middle-level teacher, and Sue is our behavioral interventionist. So, they're gonna start the presentation and go through, and then we have two other sections. Those folks couldn't be here tonight. They are Hannah Pinkney and Laura Davenport, who teach our ELL summer program. And our, sorry, ESY program that is taught by Dawn, uh, excuse me, that, that was taught by a number of special educators this summer. And Dawn Gress was going to present, but she's ill received, so she couldn't be here. So, I'll do those two presentations, okay?
Yep, and we have Steve Hyde from Shader Croft to present as well.
Okay, good evening. I'll try and be brief. This summer, Sue Schaefer and I have had the opportunity to co-direct our extended year summer school program. And we spent three weeks with 76 fabulous, hard-working students and 15 tutors, 12 of whom were teaching in the classroom and three were support. The students were in range from K to grade seven, and the class sizes ranged from approximately eight to 11 students. We had Spark and Lego, and then two, a snack and a lunch that was provided for the students. We had two blocks of academics, so one-hour literacy blocks and one-hour mathematics blocks each day. And, um, we had library time as well, so 30 minutes for each student. And they alternated between Alexia program, which is designed to increase their reading proficiency, and then either fast math, fractionation, or extra math, designed to increase their fact fluency or their, um, understanding of fractions. Basically, the student demographic piece here shows a pretty even split between female and male students. Sue, you can go to the next one, please. This is a breakdown of the grade levels represented, so it's fairly equivalent across the spectrum, K, K7. And now, the student demographics for those enrolled, and then those who declined over on the right there. So, the breakdown included those students who are on an IP, a 504, ELL, and students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And this just talks briefly about the assessment data that we're gonna look at and review. So, at K5, there were two benchmarks that we were interested in looking at and reporting out on. So, the BAS system is basically utilized to ascertain independent and instructional reading levels. The baseline assessment in math was used to determine proficiency in connection with the Common Course Eight standards. And the proficiency mean was the data point that was analyzed, so student scores ranged from 1 to 4. And at the middle school level, we have the DRP, which is the degrees of reading power. So, it's proficiency and reading comprehension, so slightly different. In first grade, you'll see over on the left there, those that were enrolled and those that were not enrolled. And essentially, what I'm just going to go over is, we're looking for any increase in performance from students or any population that maintained their performance from spring to, spring of the previous year to fall right now. Both of these, either an increase or a maintenance in their score, will indicate a lack of regression over the summer. So, that's really one of the goals of our program, is just to come in and practice in a healthy and safe environment and make sure that those present levels were maintained over the course of the summer. So, the first column there, there's generally going to be three. The first column is improvement, then maintain is in blue, and then those that declined will be in yellow. If there are missing data points for each grade band, the data points are a result of students that have moved, students that were already proficient in the assessment, so they weren't tested again, or scores that were not available at the time of the presentation. So, as far as first grade goes, 44% of the students who were enrolled maintained, which was excellent. And then, on the math side, there were 11.1% of this population who improved on their scores, and 55% of them who maintained. In second grade, in the BAS, so on the literacy side, 70% of the students maintained their proficiency from the previous spring. And in math... Go to the next one. Oh, it's frozen. Hold on a second. You good? Yeah. And in math, 90% of them maintained their mathematical score from the previous spring. Okay. In third grade, 31% increased their score, and 54% of them maintained. And you can see the comparison over there, the numbers are slightly higher than those that weren't enrolled. Okay? And in math, 15% of them increased their score and 8% maintained.
Can you go back to that slide one more time? That's an interesting, you know, the numbers, I mean, people say it's a small...
Down in the corner, there might be arrows that you can... Yeah.
Oh, there you go, yeah, it's...
Here? Uh, down is a little bit further.
All the way to the bottom left, keep on going, there, more left, more left, more left, one more left. There you go, yeah.
Yeah.
And then sort of passing the...
Yeah, 77% declined in math. I mean, these are small sample sizes.
Yeah.
So, that's, you know, the major factor, obviously.
In third grade, we're looking at 13 who are enrolled and six who are not enrolled.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's an explanation of that. That's the challenge around drawing statistics around this...
Yes, reporting data on a very small sample population. But you can see there was an equivalent decline in scores for those that were not enrolled as well, so it's an interesting parallel.
Yeah, no, it is sort of fascinating. Are you different, doing a lot of differentiation at different grade levels? You know, so are you...
Yes, and, and K5, I'm less equipped to speak for, but yes, that is, that is a portion of how we spend our time in looking at what's, what's appropriate for students across the class, yeah.
Yeah, no, sounds good, Art, I'd love you not to interrupt you, you're on.
No, no, it's fine. Please, interrupt away.
What's so challenging about, I mean, the, I think all of these numbers is drawing conclusions from, from them, given the size of the sample set. You know, I think all of us, for picking the challenge to the population, you know, view the value of getting in there and continuing, you know, focusing on academics in, in situations where they may not get it as directly at home. You know, regardless, I know we, you know, do as much math practice or that as we should during the summer, and there's almost the risk of regression. So, you know, when you're dealing with students who are eligible for summer school, obviously dealing with kids who are, you know, so, have somewhat more academic challenges. So, I think at a grade level, it can be more difficult to perceive exactly, you know, to see progress or to see...
And that's why looking at those who maintained is particularly valuable. So, that when we're coming in again in the fall, we're not starting at a default, we're starting where they left off, and that way, we can make those gains in the fall forward for the current grade band that they're in.
Yeah, good, all right, yeah, that'll stop.
Okay. Fourth grade literacy, 80% maintained their BAS, BAS score from the previous spring. And in math, 20% showed an increase and 30% maintained. In fifth grade for literacy, 7% improved upon their BAS score, 43% maintained. And in math, 36% of them maintained their previous performance from the spring. And in middle school literacy, the data point involves the DRP. So, in fifth graders going into the sixth grade, 12% of them improved upon their DRP and 67% of them maintained.
So, I was looking at this slide, obviously it's like a big slide, but, you know, the, the very surprising numbers to the huge jump in percentage in free and reduced lunch, you know, for a population that hasn't really changed. So, any story around that? Is it just a...
Do you want us to kind of go through it first?
Yeah, go ahead, Sue, yeah, sorry, sorry.
She has more information.
Yeah. I'm just gonna give you a little closer view, if you will. I only have one slide. Sorry, everyone.
But it's an important slide.
I, I'm, uh, you know, kind of the keeper of the books, if you will, but I also tracked it so that you would get a, a good idea of the progression over the course of a number of years. And it seemingly has held pretty steady. There are a few points that jumped out at me this year. We've increased in budget primarily because of the contractual wage increase that the board, I think you guys obviously know about. And then, the, also, we had to go to two buses. And we typically try to hold it to one bus or one and a half buses, if you will, but, um, the areas that we had to cover made the bus route too long, so we had to increase it to two buses, and those were the two deciding factors in the increase. And then also, um, probably the other thing that jumped out at me was the, um, the growth of the percentages of free and reduced lunch kids. And, um, I think that story's being told all over Vermont. The demographics of the state are changing, and so, um, I think most districts are seeing that. So, I guess if you have any questions, I think it's...
It's just such a huge jump, I mean, it's, you know, it's a tripling in one year. And so, there's a story behind that, and there has to be a story behind that.
Well, it's actually not in, in, not in one year...
I know, it's two years ago.
Yeah, two years.
You know, so you went from 14% to 46% between, oh, 13 and 14, which is more than tripled.
So, one, one thing that I always wanna make sure people understand as far as this statistic, that particular statistic, is that it's a self-reported statistic.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So, in order to be eligible for free and reduced lunch, a parent or guardian actually has to sign up for it.
Right.
So, you could truly be a very low socioeconomic status. And not sign up for it, and you wouldn't be included in this figure.
Right.
And the reverse of that, of course, you could...
Exactly, and there's been all sorts of, you know, stigmas around that for years, and so that's one of the things that's suppressed, enrollment rates, and, and I know there's, you know, incentives around getting people to enroll and all that sort of stuff. And I don't know if we were, were pursuing people to return those forms more actively in recent years or what, you know, the story might be around then. I mean, obviously, you know, Harper Place came into play, that may be a slight factor. Although, again, the fact that the student population hasn't changed that much, but that the profile of the student has changed so dramatically is, you know, at least interesting.
Yes, yes, very interesting. I think it's a, a number of contributing factors, so that's why I think you're right, Mac, to say that, you know, honestly, there's, there are, you know, there's a population of students that might be a little bit different, but they're not a huge percentage of the population. So, there's multiple factors that weigh into it.
Yep.
I guess the only other thing that I really wanted to point out that I, I'm not sure you can see by looking at this chart, is that, um, the cost per, per student per day was hovering around $40 and, um, for one, for a tutor for one hour in, in Shelburne right now, it's 50 bucks. So, in other words, they got a good four hours and they were served two meals. And so, that's a pretty good bang for the buck when you consider what the going rate is right now for a tutor in Shelburne. So, um, any questions?
Can you talk a little bit about, you know, I mean, when I, I remember, right, when I was in grade school, I just remember the dread that every student had that when they had to go to summer school. And, uh, so I just wonder, you know, it sounds like you guys are doing some great stuff. I saw some of the slides you guys had, which looked really interesting and fun. I just wonder, you know, give me the day in the life thing, how is, what's your perception? How kids are enjoying that?
Um, so when they get there, first thing they do is get fed. And, and, and they're all pretty much hungry, I mean, isn't any kid hungry when they get to school? But, uh, so they get fed, and they get a good breakfast, and then they're off to some sort of instruction, coupled with Spark, and that's just a, a quick little exercise, something to sort of get their, get their brain pumping. And, um, and they, um, some of them, starting in the fourth grade, they go to Lego Robotics. And that's been a, a real big hit for a lot of reasons. And we actually see the extrapolation of that in middle school as well. And not only that, but I feel like that, I was rather pleased to see that the engineering part of that and the programming part of that also sort of took off in other areas of their classroom experience. So, I was, that's one thing that I was very, very glad that we, that we incorporated into the program. And, um, they go to library time, and there, again, it's a, it's a combination of going to doing, well, they do fast math, they do, you know, right, different computer things, but then they also simply just read, like, they have an, uh, a chance to go get books. And we have a program too, as their, um, as the librarians go through the, um, school year and they're discarding books, they save some for us. And so, then, in the summer school, the kids have a chance not only to read some of those books, but they get to keep them. And I actually have had kids tell me that that's the only books that they have. So, that, too, for me, was a real, um, I was really glad to see that we could offer that opportunity. And then they have more instruction, and, um, long about, let's say, 10 o'clock, they are, they, they're given more food, 10, between 10 and 10:30. And, you know, you'd think that at 8 o'clock that they would fill up and be full, but I don't time it. You know, long about 10:30, they're just, uh, really, they're hungry again. And, um, again, given the, the dynamic of, of the student population, I'm just glad that we, we can provide that service because it has made a, a difference going from, I've, I've sort of been doing this for a long time and I've seen the, um, the difference in how much the kids actually can pack and how hard it is what we're doing when, when they're well-fed, when they're not hungry, and when they're, um, you know, when you meet those real basic needs, then they're, they're much more tuned in to be able to concentrate and, and do the work that they need. And then, um, long about 5 to 12, they are, um, you know, we bring them all out in the lobby and away they go on the school bus.
Cool. Yeah. I was just thinking about the culture, and, uh, we greet them on the bus in the morning, and they're really excited to get off the bus and come in and join us. They can collaborate in the library to start, and then they head off to breakfast, and it's this great social bringing bread, and they all get to see each other again, and they're happy. And, um, we're saying, "Happy Birthday," numerous days out of the summer because inevitably, you know, 20% of them had a birthday. And, um, I, I've seen many of their, some of their goal-setting for PLPs has stemmed from the work they did over the summer. And some of them have talked about being better Lego builders and wanting to be better engineers as a result of some of the programs they've engaged through summer school. And, um, it's just been a really fabulous culture. And then, on Fridays, we have celebration of popsicles and get out a little bit early. So, they're happy to attend and to be there, and, uh, they're really supportive of one another. So, the same faces keep coming back, summer after summer after summer. And there's really fabulous relationships between students and staff as a result, so it's, um...
You know, I have to, and I think that, I think there's change too, is that, um, first of all, we do really see a lot of students across the whole socioeconomic, so, practice, you're right. So, so having said that, I'm hearing kids during the school year talk about summer school. That didn't happen in 2006 because I don't know whether that was more of a stigma. I'm not sure, but I do hear now, um, kids come up to me, or they, I hear them talking about, "Well, in summer school, we did this." That probably wouldn't have happened 10 years ago, and so, um, so that tells me that something's working.
Right. So, Dave, you know, cut me off at any time because this is, you know, I, I love this subject. Not so, you know, summer school in particular, but, you know, generally speaking, I think a lot of the education statistics say, heck, the more, you know, the biggest correlation between student performance is time in school. So, and, and there's lots of, you know, evidence of the backsliding in the summer thing, but also just generally, you know, the ability to increase achievement with regards to length of day. So, you look at, you know, opportunities both during the summer, which is a notorious backsliding time, as well as, again, extending the school day. So, you and I have had this discussion in the past, how do we, you know, how do we, you know, put scat on overdrive? How do we, you know, hire Devin as like full-time scat person instead of, you know, just hanging out with those whatever, sixth, seventh, eighth graders all day long? And, um, you know, so I think we need to be creative as a board, obviously very much being mindful from a budgetary standpoint, how it all happens, but also recognizing the opportunities around that. And so, you know, thinking about how summer school becomes not just for those kids, you know, that need remedial education, but again, sort of de-stigmatizing it by making it, you know, entering sort of the campy elements and having it not just be the kids who are so challenged, but have kids who wanna learn micro pair, learn the Lego robotics, you know, and with all the rest of that. But, um, again, I, conversation, I think, for another day, another conversation.
Well, and, and the thing is, when you, if you, sort of philosophically, again, what we talked about a couple of weeks ago, if you find, if you can find out what kids love, and so, in some cases, it's reading. My goodness, in some cases, it is Lego robotics, in some cases, believe it or not, it's math in summer school. And if you can tap into what they love, you've got them. Then, then you've got them as a student. And, and I feel like we've done a lot better job as the years progress, probably because of the stigma, I, I feel like is for the most part gone, but then also because we're able to do other things.
Yeah, great.
So, thanks so much for listening.
Sue, I've got a question.
Sure.
I'm just looking at the number of students and, and the daily cost of students. And the trend, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, uh, in 2012, we sort of peaked at 93 students, so... And it's, it's gone down by about 20% from the last three years. So, what do we, do we think?
So, I'm sorry, say that again, so what's gone down?
Number of students is 93 in 2012. 2013, we got 75.
Yeah.
2014, we got 75. 2015, we got 76.
So, let me tell you what the, how we do that. Because I, I don't think that you necessarily are aware, so we really beat the bushes, and here's what I mean by that. When we, um, like, long about January, I already started looking at who, who, what students are pulled out, what population, the tiered students. And so, we're already contacting the teachers and, uh, JenSA and, um, John Madden, our literacy and our math people. And we're saying, "We need to know who you're serving," and then we contact the teachers. And, and so, we try to, to pull in every single student that gets any sort of services. And the, the result is, sometimes we have... And the result is sometimes we have ninety, and sometimes we have seventy-six, but believe me when I tell you, it's not for lack of trying. I mean, to the point that, you know, I literally go knock on people's doors and say, "We sent you an application. I haven't heard from you. Are you considering sending your child?" And so I don't know why in some, in some years we have seventy-six, and in some years we have ninety-one, or however many it was. But believe me, it is not, it is not for lack of contacting all of the tiered and all the students who have any sort of services. I don't know, maybe you can address that.
Well, Patty just made a really interesting point that I'd never paralleled, because I'd seen that. It does parallel the start of Shader Croft, which is a dozen students, a dozen students who are involved in a different middle school program. You know what, if we looked at this and saw, you know, eighty-seven, eighty-seven, eighty-eight.
The Shader Croft and the.
Because this number does not include a dozen middle school students.
Yeah, that is a good point. As a matter of fact, we, some of our traditional students.
Three level wise, different levels are ended, those of the students that are returning to Shader Croft, that are your middle school students.
That's actually a very valid point. Because this, those are typically students that we would have, the Shader Croft kids. We have the ones that go that we previously would have had in summer school, that's.
But Shader Croft is middle school, these are K eight.
No, these are K eight. No, these are K eight.
But, but the population drops. That's the issue, is in two thousand eleven or two thousand thirteen, that's when Shader Croft started and bled off the middle school population.
Yeah. Because the number of middle school students we have certainly is less than it has been in the past. And actually, it's exactly right, it was those three years since Shader Croft has been.
So are we duplicating services here?
No. Well, I wouldn't think so, because they don't do the same thing we do.
Different program.
Yeah. I mean, they, they just simply don't. Certainly, I can't speak to what Steve does, but I, as far as I've been able to ascertain, they, it's not the same services at all.
Actually, a great segue into talking about Shader Croft and Steve, because it is fundamentally different program, different target, very different outcomes. And one thing we started Shader Croft based on was we were having difficulty recruiting sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to participate in summer school. You know, for a lot of them, they've been doing this for a while, it's the same old, same old, and their needs change. And so we've had a lot of success, if we could introduce Steve. And Steve's the director of Shader Croft in our building, and in, well, I'll let you describe where you are. Thanks for coming up.
Okay, no problem.
Am I done? Any more questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Devin, Sue, thank you for coming out tonight.
We really appreciate you coming, thank you.
It's not that I don't like you, but I think I'll leave phone.
Thank you for the.
Thanks.
That was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get you that later.
So I'm going to make myself comfortable, still off the chair, over the chair and microphone.
Yeah, there's a mic right there.
Oh, okay. Thank you, David. Of course, I apologize. So my name is Steve Hyde, and, yes, we started the Shader Croft School, which is really not a school, but we'll go with that. That's another story for another day. We're really, we're an education, nonprofit educational organization that provides programs for kids. Primarily, middle school kids, primarily at-risk kids. Now, my definition of at-risk is pretty large. I think most middle school kids are probably at risk. Their decisions they make are always very interesting. But we've been running the program since two thousand and one. Off and on, we took a hiatus for about three years, and then when we reinstituted the program, we did it in a more collaborative style with, excuse me, with schools. And it's worked much better, and I've, I've enjoyed it a lot more. I enjoyed it before, I don't mean to say that, but I think it's, it works, that class, sense of collaboration, I think, is very important. So, so exactly what is it? It is a, we designed it from the standpoint of thinking about middle school students particularly, knowing that we needed to engage them, catch their attention, but we also wanted it to be an academic program. I mean, I'm a firm believer is that we need to, the academics are important, we need to not shy away from them. So I think sometimes when people see what we do, they look at it and see it as sort of an enrichment program, and it's really not. It's really a very academic program. It's focused uniquely on literacy. Sometimes we've tried to incorporate other things, and when we do, our work on the literacy front goes down, and the work on the other thing that we try to add in goes down, these kids really need to stay focused and not move from thing to thing. So our, for us, literacy includes reading, reading comprehension, reading fluency, written expression, and oral expression. So that's our literacy component. Along with that, we have a strong component of youth development, focusing on leadership, decision-making, peer relationships, all sorts of components that are appropriate for middle school in terms of their own youth development. So the program is a student-centered, community-based, experiential program, as I said, focused on literacy and youth development. So the way that it works is that we have, each student is asked to identify something they want to learn about. It could be video game design, it could be baking, it could be glass blowing, it could be magic, it could be psychic phenomena. We really don't, you know, constrain them, because we want them to really explore their interests and sort of have, help them to figure out what their identity is. So we ask them to identify something they want to learn about. Then with the help of an adult, they plan an adventure, and we call it an adventure, as opposed to a field trip. For a specific reason, we want them to get used to, we don't know exactly what's going to happen. We have a good, some idea, but sort of entering into sort of that reasonable risk-taking that's important for middle school kids. So we, with the help of an adult, this student plans an adventure to meet someone in the community who knows about that interest and who can teach that student and some of his or her classmates about that interest. Okay? So, so now we have an adventure. Each student leads one, and the student leads, they've set it up, they organize it, they advocate for it, and they lead it. Again, part of the youth development piece. Then from there, we do some preparation for the adventure. We find some reading material about the topic, and, and we use that as our reading component for reading instruction. Then we also, students will be, in their oral expression class, they'll do a couple of things, but one of them is they'll learn how to introduce themselves to somebody who's not their peer, they'll learn how to interview somebody, they'll learn how to carry on a conversation with a non-peer. We'll also do some word vocabulary development, and we'll also teach them how to do some storytelling. But all of these components relate back to the adventure. Then, we go on the adventure, and the adventure typically happens in the afternoon. We have great flexibility, so it doesn't necessarily have to happen in the afternoon. We go on the adventure, we go in groups of usually eight students, and it's led by the student. We meet this individual, spend some time with them, usually about an hour and a half or so. And then, so after, after the adventure, we have material to write, use to write with. And we use that adventure to propel our writing instruction in the subsequent days. So that's sort of the model. The day runs with the, program starts at eight-thirty. We have a morning meeting, runs for about forty-five minutes. Again, oral expression is part of that, youth development components are part of that. And, and then we have classes. Each student gets, it's usually about forty-five minutes in a oral expression class, reading class, writing class, and a trip, we call it, adventure planning class. And then that brings us to around twelve o'clock, a little bit after, and then have lunch, and then we head out into the community. So that's sort of the, the model. Let me see if there's anything else I've forgotten.
Where are you actually located?
Your school.
Oh, good stuff, yeah.
Yeah. And that's, you know, it makes sense. And I'm sort of a, I've always felt that summer is that lost time for kids, and particularly middle school kids. They're too old for some things and too young for other things.
And you told us, how many, how many students do you serve?
Twelve students, and we have four staff. So, and that's another important component, is the, the group size, the instructional groups are very small. And it's a very relational program. I just, the other day, we, one of our teachers got an email from one of the students who was in the program asking that teacher if they could have, run a Shader Croft program for the winter vacation. And then he went on to say how much he enjoyed Shader Croft, and he really missed everybody, and this, that, and the other. I thought it was quite, quite nice. You know, when kids can set, step up and say, "This is how I spent my summer. I spent my summer in," do we want that terrible word of calling it school? Sure, why not? Because kids, kids basically want to learn. They want to improve their skills, and we just need to figure out how to do it in an engaging way. So, that's sort of.
Just slightly, a question about migrating all middle school services into this model. I mean, I wouldn't say one way or the other, but just from a programmatic standpoint, is there a reason not to? I guess would, that would be the question. I mean, how many kids are left in traditional summer school versus Shader Croft, you know, in that, in that age cohort?
This year, there were seven and, hold on. In sixth grade, there were five, and in seventh grade, there were nine, so.
And I don't know if that's.
Fourteen kids.
A topic on the agenda.
Yeah, very different target group. Rachel Prat, Patraska and I work real significantly with creating the group that will be working with Steve. And a lot of it is based on who are the students that we know are not going to have rich summer experiences?
Yeah.
And then it's, it's a pretty tremendous recruiting effort. Steve reaches out to them, Rachel will reach out to them, I'll reach out to them, doing anything we can, because they're the students that we know are going to have tremendous steps back in the summer, and they're at that level of risk.
Program without programs or.
Exactly.
No, it sounds good.
It's also twice as expensive, you know, I'll put that out there.
Right.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a, it's a full-day program, it's five weeks, four days a week. But, you know, we have kids who come back again and again, because it worked for them, so.
How was this integrated? Megan Roy's group, I mean, is it, is it just Shelburne, or are there other?
Oh, okay.
S C S schools.
We have a site at Williston, we've had them for a long time, and we have a combined site at Charlotte for Heinsburg and Charlotte students. And we've recently, this past year, we opened up an E L L site at Winuski. And we, you know, we are looking to, to grow and provide more services to more kids. And I still think there's a big need out there for young kids who need that academic support, and that academic, that ac-, excuse me, that academic challenge in a, in a, in a, in a different package. You know, with it, you know, being out in the community, you know, the fact that it's, the writing, the reading, the speaking is all integrated, I think is, is very powerful learning context.
Is it twelve?
Yes.
Are E L L?
None. At, at Shelburne.
No.
Yep.
Right. But at Winuski, they were all E L L. And it would, I think it would be hard to, to integrate this, but it's not impossible. But I do have some handouts, I, I should have brought our brochure. We do have a website that has some information on it, and sort of gives you a flavor of what we're trying to do. And we're really trying to empower these kids, to let them know that they can do this, they, you know, they have interests, they have ideas that need to be honored and appreciated. And I always find, we go, we'll go to different places and meet different people, and we'll frequently ask them. And so, "When did you start getting interested in this, what you're doing?" And a lot of times they'll say, "Oh, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen." And I say, "Do you hear that? Right in your age." So they're not, certainly not too young to begin to realize real interests of theirs. So I have, this is the product that they produce. We asked them to write, and so their writings are in here. It will give you a clue as to what their interests are, where they went. I also included, we have our charts as well. This is a chart, we ask, we survey the students, the parents, and the students' teachers about this time of year. We, about their experience. We asked them directly, "Did your, did you, did you have improvement?" And we give them some different choices in all of the academic areas, and then also some youth development areas. And then we put, we graph it side by side with the parents, teachers, and students. And so, we don't have this past summers, but we have, we have two thousand thirteen and fourteen, and on the back, we have some comments that people have made on those surveys of that year. So I will pass these on to you.
The other piece that I'd highlight is, Steve and his board are pretty modest about the tremendous fundraising that they do. Over half of the cost of the program is through grants, donations, fundraising that we do, and that's really done on the school's behalf. So, you know, it's, it's an expensive program, we're picking up about half the cost of it.
And with that said, if you have any suggestions, if you know of people in the community, or companies in the community, or foundations, please let us know, I'd be willing to talk to anybody.
Yeah.
So, that's it.
I know, it's a good program, kids talk about it all the time, so.
Good, good, I'm glad it brings some joy to their world.
All right. Thanks for coming out tonight, Steve, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.
I saw the Martian.
Ah, well worth it.
Some more important note. Yeah, some more important.
So I'll go ahead and continue.
You can move it. Great program. Sure, I'll take them, thank you.
We are still in presentation, Patty's gonna. Looks like it's coming.
All right, so.
Back to the school, sorry, talking about baseball.
So continuing with the theme of summer, just to let you know, Hannah Pinkney.
Just to let you know, Hannah Pinkney couldn't be here because actually her husband's in the service and she was going to pick him up at the airport. So unfortunately, she couldn't be here and Laura had parent-teacher conferences, so she couldn't be here. So, I'm representing them. So, this year was the first year, if you remember, this first summer of our ELL summer camp. As you can see, we had eighteen students and they were, they ranged from pre-K through eighth grade and speaking seven different languages. There was, Laura was the classroom teacher and Hannah was the ELL teacher. And they did it for seven days, uh, six days, excuse me, three days one week and three days the following week. And they did a thematic kind of unit so that they went to different places. The whole concept was to try to discover what Shelburne had to offer so that kiddos who may not have gotten out into the community would be able to experience that. And they made a movie. So, it was a pilot program. It was funded through Title III, about fifty percent of it. And Shelburne, you know, our regular budget funded about fifty percent of it. And we're hoping to do it again next summer. It was a huge success. One of the reasons it was really a success was the ladder bullets there. We had sixty percent regression, as noted through BAS scores, two summers ago from our, with our ELL population. So, sixty percent of the students went down in their reading scores. And this year, starting out, you can see that only twenty percent of the students had regressed. So, that's a, that's a huge statistic. So, not only did kids have just such a great time and really learn so much about our culture and, and the community of Shelburne, but also obviously their, their academics increased or, or pretty much stayed the same. So, they didn't see any regression, which was so exciting. And we've really noticed it as they've started school this year. The field trips they went on, so the Pearson Library, Flying Book, Pig Bookstore, Shelburne Farms, the Teddy Bear Factory and Shelburne Museum. And of course, we wanna thank all of them for being such great hosts. And I don't know if the next slide was a video, but for some reason, I'm not sure if it works, but we'll give it a shot. Oh.
ELL summer camp video.
When we were at the flying book, we got to look at new books and pick out new books to read over the seat. At the library, we got to do a scavenging hunt and we had to find books by the corner on the side of the book. We also got to play back.
My favorite, my favorite activity was definitely rats at the library. I love rats.
Scary, huh?
My favorite field trip was Shelburne Farms. Why Shelburne Farms was my favorite field trip? Because of the animals. The yellow stuff, the yellow carac and I saw those chickens, sheep, ducks and cows. And the cows was my favorite because it was so sweet. This is why Shelburne Farms is my favorite field trip.
Our, our ELL summer camp went to the Teddy Bear Factory. We learned about the process of making a teddy bear. They, they are lots of steps. Our tour guide also taught us about how to take care of the park in here. So, that day was a long time. We also did a bicycle course for fun that, that we ended up. That was exciting. I hope we get to come back to the Teddy Bear Factory next time.
ELL summer camp went to Shelburne Museum. We saw a lot of cool things and learned a lot. The museum was a lot of exhibits. We saw stuff, birds, but, but stuffed bears, but they don't hunt bears anymore. We went, we went to the carousel and it was a lot of fun. We also went to the Icanda Rover, which was a big ship. We had so much on it and I went to the, I want to go back. Thank you for watching our ELL summer camp. You enjoy, you do enjoy it, bye.
All right. So, uh, let's go down here. So, all of the students made various movies and then they put their iMoVs together to make that big one for, for this presentation. So, our hopes for the future are that we'll have a two-week, a full two-week summer camp this summer and build in some more time for literacy, math and some extended practice. And, and have a science and technology theme as opposed to just the Shelburne theme, so. Any questions?
My main question around all this stuff is, um, you know, just how to do it all cost-effectively. You know, obviously, there's very finite resources around this and there's some kind of need and, you know, and I think about this program, it's really fun and great and I, you know, I wonder about doing like a once-a-week thing or something like that, or trying to coordinate, you know, outings among certain populations where there's less direct sort of school cost involved. You know, needless to say, in, in an ideal world, we able to run a twelve-month program, but that's not reality. So, you know, how do you use very scarce, finite resources to, you know, to keep the rhythm going? From my standpoint, I wonder if, you know, doing something more of the one-a-week model where you say, all right, this week's outing is X, that week's outing is Y, and, you know, guess what? We're gonna try and read a book in between or something like that. And maybe a way to, I mean, again, this is pure brainstorming, I have no...
That's a great idea. I know that from a community perspective, it's challenging to mesh transportation, those type of things. But I think those are great, great ideas, you know, that's a great idea and certainly something I'll bring up to Hannah and Laura. I know that they're interested, certainly Hannah's interested in doing it again next year. And possibly Laura is the classroom teacher as well, so.
I think anyways, we're just trying to mimic it's kind of what happens. I mean, there's, you've got, there's always the theme of the two Americas. You know, the, the playgroup community is very lively. A lot of people I hang out with, we all met in playgroup fundamentally. And how do you, you know, how do you build communities among, you know, the communities that are less sort of part of the, the normal Shelburne network? Is kind of what I'm trying to do. You know, some of it is, can be school-centric, but part of it is just from a communications hub facilitation standpoint. You know, how do we just, you know, put them together and let the, let it run from there without any cost involved fundamentally? You know, again, that's brainstorming, it's not, I don't, I don't expect any of those answers.
I did also wanna let you know that it's a half-day program and the students frequently do couple some of the time with summer school. So, the regular summer school that Devin and Sue teach, so, that's why, you know, they take advantage of that as well, so. But those are great ideas, I'll certainly chat with them. And then finally, as I said, Don unfortunately couldn't be here, Don Gross, who's our new Director of Student Services. So, these are just some general statistics that we put together for the ESY program, the Extended School Year. This is for students who are on our, on, on plans, on IEPs. And as you can see, there's a couple of programs here. One is the Early Essential Ed Program. So, that serves students who are in AAA. And, you know, I don't have to read that to you, you can see how many kids are served, eleven kiddos. And the two teachers are Shelley and Liz, who taught it this summer, who are regular AAA teachers.
Is that a subset of the, the regular AAA population?
Yes, yes.
It's during the year?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. And then our Intensive Needs just happen to also have eleven students in that program, not the same eleven. And that is actually driven much more by just the idea of maintaining services throughout the summer for, for these students. So, as you can see, they get academic, social, speech, language and communication skills.
And those are more significantly disabled?
Correct, yeah.
The big change with that Intensive Needs for this summer was it was integrated with Imagine Part Two. And so, rather than being a separate program that had been in the past, those students were integrated as much as possible. We would pull them out for services, things that were specific to their IEP needs, but integrating them as much as possible with the rest of the students. And I know, we, really good feedback from parents about that.
We actually physically changed so that we had students based in the IAS portion as well as our nurses station, which was really, really great for the kiddos to be closer to where all the other kids were because they had been in the past in, kind of, in the journey section, so.
You know, again, I think my, my question is, I'm trying to understand, you know, I understand that we've had to commit our special ed to the Supervisory Union and so many special ed students are served by Shelburne's summer education programs. I just, I'm unders, I'm trying to understand how this is separate from, or is, is it integrated at all with what Megan is doing?
It's integrated with what Megan's doing. It's, it's, um, this is just really an extension, so the way, all kid services are really divided into two sections. There's the regular school year section and then there's what's gonna happen over the summer for them. And so, it's just kind of a continuation of services, Bob. It's not really, if you actually read an IEP, you'd see it's divided into those two sections.
And, and is it funded, I realize some of it is, or a lot of it, about half of it is grant-funded or state, federal funds. But is it funded by, at the Supervisory Union level? Okay, so, it's not part of our budget, really?
Well...
Or it's charged back to us?
Yeah, it's a service.
ADM?
Yep.
Based on ADM?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's all pro-rata?
These are all services that are written into the individual's plan.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So, you can just see the, that we have a speech-language pathologist and OT, or occupational therapist and a physical therapist who met with kids and their numbers are there, just for your information. And if anyone has any additional questions?
I think my only last thing that, that relates back to your comment, I, I guess mentally, I'd forgotten that Part Two is a twelve-month program at this point. And so, again, to the extent, just love the idea of, again, making it one of those, you know, make it as dynamic as you can in terms of having, you know, you, you know, so, to the extent we can integrate it with maybe some Shelburne Act programs or any of those things where you're getting sort of a steady influx of kids where it's not just a certain school population that pops in there. You know, and I know that's been kind of the dream of Part Two for a while and sort of the SCAT Part Two integration and all that. And, you know, again, I think, and, and doing that is a twelve-month opportunity as well. Again, I don't think, it's not easy because there's so much, there's finite resources, budgets, space, da-da-da. But that, you know, looking at that is, I, that's something, once, once we get some bonds wrapped up, that's gonna be an exciting next thing to...
Yeah, yeah, you and I know, we're talking the same way.
Yeah, exactly.
Cool, so I'll move on to, thanks, Matt.
Reports to the board, five point one, Act forty-six, Study Committee. We've talked a little bit about that. I don't know how much you folks have, I don't know, do you have any questions about it or anything?
We talked about, we heard about the, the communications.
Yep, and, you know, so really what this, what the committee is doing right now is just trying to set up a timeline in order to determine what steps we need to make and when in order to, to be ready for a fast-track merger, which would have to be voted upon by June thirtieth of twenty sixteen. So, we'd have to bring it before our town for a vote, yea or nay for consolidation, June thirtieth, twenty sixteen, for implementation, I believe, in twenty seventeen.
So, we're, this is gonna be on the March ballot?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it would have, it's, there's no way it could be done in time for a March ballot. It would be a special election in sometime in June.
Do we have any, you know, any headlines? I mean, I think the major headlines have always been that, you know, Shelburne's per pupil spending has been lower than the other CSU communities and so that would be an impact possibly from a, you know, load leveling standpoint.
Yeah, so they, they don't, they don't have those numbers quite yet. They're, they're trying to build those models and I think that those models are gonna be finished shortly, within the next month.
Right.
I understand, there's a couple of different ways they're gonna do it. They're gonna do, you know, Bob's gonna do his calculation and then they have some financial models from a company down in Boston that's developing these in order to figure that out.
Right.
But that's like second level, you know? We're still on the first level of establishing, you know, what are all the variables we need to address? You know, finance is one of them, governance is another, so, what's the board gonna look like?
Yeah.
You know, so we would, we would be, you know, voting in June on a proposed governance structure that could have three of us from Shelburne on a board.
Right.
That looks a lot like a CVU board.
Yep.
Something like that, that's just a, a potential thing, so. And it's the job of the committee, the way it's gonna, the way things are gonna happen is we're gonna have forums, we're gonna get input, we're gonna move forward with talking about governance and finance and then make a recommendation.
Yea or nay?
And, you know, from the committee on these thirteen articles and then move forward, present that to the AOE. If they approve it, then we put it on the ballot and we vote in the spring or early summer of twenty sixteen. And then if that's approved, then you set forth putting all the pieces in place. I mean, there's, there's like, no part of this is closing schools, no part of this is consolidating facilities. It's all just bringing it under, more things under the, essentially the CSSA umbrella.
No, it's, yeah, it's interesting. And does that make, would that make us eligible for the full tax?
If we follow that timeline and we're ready and if we approve in June of twenty sixteen, we're eligible for a fast-track merger.
Yeah, okay, and that, yeah, it has, yeah, obviously, yeah, no, I'm starting the issue, I, I, you know, we'll follow it eagerly.
I think it's very attractive, but the, the question that, I mean, the, the tax incentives are very attractive
Yeah.
and compelling, but that, there is nothing to say that, is it's eight percent the first year. What happens if the state tax rate goes up eight percent?
To, to eliminate, yeah, yeah.
You mean, the, is, how, how is that gonna be?
It is one of those funny things.
But the way that works is whatever the tax rate is, once the state figures out all that, if you're in one of these accelerated mergers, you're ten cents off whatever that tax rate is. So, whatever it would have been, it's ten cents less. At the top, now, the impact on that across the SU is not exactly the same. So, it's not like Shelburne's tax rate, ten cents less, Williston's tax rate. So, it's like at the top level, whatever the state tax rate is, ten cents off that. How that impacts each of the schools has something to do with your CLA, right? Just as it does today.
It's approximately ten cents.
Right, but, yeah.
But you're saying there wouldn't be an adjustment to the state-based tax, education tax rate?
I think that's, that's the question.
There could be, but whatever that is, there will be anyways. There are some people who are gonna be merging. For instance, right now, in November, Charlotte's gonna have a vote, not Charlotte, Chittenden Central's gonna have a vote. I was just in Charlotte. There are going to be some mergers. That, because they're going to get ten cents off their tax rate, obviously, they're not putting more money into the ed fund for these mergers.
That's the challenge.
It's the people who are merging. It's the people who are merging that are going to take advantage of, like, ten cents less than it would have been otherwise.
So if half the population, if half the, if half the districts merge and the other half don't, then these guys get ten cents off and then, then cost shift.
And the reality is, there aren't, you know, a dozen districts that could possibly do fast-track merge.
Yeah.
Just because of the situation they're in. We're in a good situation. We have one high school. So I think there are fourteen other, or maybe we're one of fourteen SUs that sent all of our kids to the same high school. Obviously, you're in a different situation there than if you've got two high schools in your SU.
Yeah.
Or you've got one high school and you've got two tuition towns, you know what I mean? The minute the complexity gets greater, it makes it almost impossible to think about a fast-track.
I, I agree with you, Bob. I mean, the tax incentives are very compelling. I think, you know, I think the real challenge, I mean, I think this whole bond endeavor has been, you know, eye-opening in many ways in terms of how this could play out. You know, the challenge becomes, when you think about like the CDU turf fields, how that has been a very trivial, it, it, the most recent proposal from a tax standpoint was really on the trivial side from my standpoint, and yet it got voted down. And the concern becomes, you know, the farther you get away from Shelburne schools and Shelburne voters, the easier it is to say, oh, there's got to be waste and graft going on there. Let's just, you know, vote it all into oblivion. And so that, you know, that would certainly be my concern with the merger, you know, because, and again, one of the things we talked about, Elaine, when I first got on board, was just understanding all the efficiencies we really already have from a, from an SD standpoint, or SU standpoint, sorry, yes, exactly. So that's, you know, again, Dave, tell us, tell us how it's going to be, tell us how it's going to be.
Yeah.
Make all the right decisions.
Again, it's just, yeah, right now, it's just working to the timeline and trying to get enough information out so we can have intelligent conversations at the forums and get information. And, you know, I, I think it's harder to organize the merger than it is to really visualize it.
Right.
Because I think the way our SU is set up, I think it's, there is so much centralization thanks to the work that you've done.
You've created the model for where everybody wants to be.
I know.
Yeah, so, and I, you know, I think that's the way it's going to go. I, I, I think we need to watch, I'm amazed at some of the conversations that are having. I guess there's, there's more interest in it in Williston than I had expected. There's some folks in Williston that are against this, which, and then, you know, and I get, I think it's easy for us to all think that Charlotte would be a challenging town for it, there was a very independent voice, and curious to see what happens. It's my editorial opinion. So, again, yeah, that's, I think that's pretty much everything that we've been working on. Just started work on the governance structure yesterday, so Keith Roberts is leading that up. So with that, we'll go to five point two, which is the principals' report.
All right, thank you. I do have a couple of paper copies if you want to pass those down, if you don't mind, if you pass those down in the chair.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Sorry, just trying to...
Sorry, I'm just going to take notes anyway.
Awesome, okay, I'll give it to you afterwards. So just wanted to give you some climate committee update. As you might know, we have established a climate committee at the end of the last school year, and they worked really hard over the summer. Obviously, their membership's right there, Megan Maynard Jacob, Jen Niles, Visanti Mayette, and Jocelyn Bouye, who are kind of the, the leaders in that team, but there are twelve other individuals who have kind of come and gone, who contribute to that team as well. And one of the things we did that was pretty cool is for Walking Wednesday, which we've done for the last six or seven years, we now have a bus that has dropped, any kiddos that want to participate in Walking Wednesday, but they've been bussers all along, a different bus each Wednesday drops some kids off, and actually, it's been about half the bus for the last two weeks. And they join us at the parade, and we, with the, with the help of the Shelburne Police Department, who graciously volunteered their services to escort us across the road, right in front of the building there, we all leave there and walk to school. So it's been really, really a great, great experience.
And this month, we want to just highlight some of the things that happened in the library. You might think the library is just a place to go and check out a book, but that's not a twenty-first century library, and we're fortunate to have Carrie Ahern at the head of that library. And some of the work she's doing in classes is really technology-based. So you'll see global readabout, which is reading a book, and then who can we connect with around the world who is reading that same book? And that's happening in classes, really at a K-eight level, and supporting some writing programs and also even some engineering. There's some elements of library, one of the new models of libraries is really to see them as maker spaces, makers of new knowledge, both conceptually through research, but also literally just hands-on learning. So, and Carrie's really embraced some pieces of that, and it's exciting to see.
And we love money, so we want to highlight some of the money that we, we've gotten from generous folks. Carrie Ahern, again, did organize, having Dave, it is pronounced Dave, and that's not a typo, he spells his name D-A-V, but Pilkey, who came, he's the author of Captain Underpants, that series that you may have heard of, and he's a pretty, I'm sorry, what?
And Uka Glue.
Oh, there you go. Awesome, awesome. Yep, that's right, that's right. So Captain came, and he came with his, the Scholastic representative from the city and his wife, and they all did this wonderful presentation. We just want to do a shout-out to Scholastic Books because they gave us a thousand dollars so that we could purchase some more books for our library, and a big shout-out to Flying Pig for bringing them here. Elizabeth was the person who was present, but both Elizabeth and Josie made sure that they got to the school, and, you know, we, it was seamless. Carrie even, actually wasn't even there that day, she couldn't be there. So she put another couple of people in charge, and everything went well. I think the kids really liked it, and amazingly, we had a number of middle school kids who participated, or who wanted to watch the show as well, which was wicked cool, I thought, because, you know, but he's, he's great to listen to.
They wanted the cape, is what they wanted.
I'm sure they wanted the cape as well. Okay, so they did want the cape. So every child was presented with a cape that they could then take home, so, yeah, I know.
Sample size of one in my house, says that this is one of the best things you've ever done.
Of course, of course.
I mean, we, I think kids were given an opportunity to order books.
Yes, they were.
At this event.
Yep, and, yep, and they're...
Those books showed up at my house a couple days later.
Exactly.
And one of them was read that night, and the next one was read the next morning. It made him so much more excited about, not just reading, but also like how cool it is to draw.
Yes, yeah.
And things like that. So this was, this one was really a hit out of the park.
Oh, I'll make sure to let Carrie know that.
Yeah, it was, it was amazing.
She works so hard on those things.
Alan, have you considered a Halloween costume as the principal from Captain Underpants?
I can see, repress front page. I can make that work if you want.
I know, actually, one of the, one of the kids who was at the performance said to me afterwards, you know, you're a principal, right? And I said, yes. And she said, but you never yell. Because, you know, they've always got that principal yelling at everybody. And I said, I try not to. And also, I don't, wanted to acknowledge the Flynn Center, so as you know, we've had affiliation with the Flynn Center for many years now, and this year, with the help of Sally Stevens, we got another grant for twenty-five hundred dollars that supports Words Come Alive. So a number of our teachers participate in that. It's a great program, and it just integrates the arts into our core classes. Also, we want to acknowledge the great work that John Madden does. He leads our fifth grade student leadership council, and I just wanted to kind of highlight what it was because sometimes we forget that the good work they do, because it's not really flashy, but it's really important. Their purpose statement there, and just to let you know that they have developed core principals last year, I think it was, they had Ryan, Flyin' Ryan, the gentleman come and, and talk to them, and they really appreciated the fact that they could write these core principles, and it really helps them when they're facing the difficulties in their lives and choices they have to make, so that's been important.
And our school-wide PD we wanted to highlight is the work of our two guidance counselors, Katie and Rachel. You may not be aware that last year's CVU went through the ramp certification, which is a national certification for a counseling program. I believe one of the first high schools in the nation to...
Yep.
Yep, and we're trying to be right on their tails in K-eight, and really comprehensive. It means that our entire guidance curriculum, K-eight, is aligned with national standards, has learning outcomes, and also has real evidence-based outcomes in terms of supporting kids, down to analysis of a guidance counselor's calendar for percentages of time in various activities. It is really great work that is in both of their goals for their professional development plans, and it's, it's a really aggressive move, but we're excited about it and trying to support them. And you can see, we found four kiddos last month, so we just keep growing.
We keep finding those kiddos.
All good.
It is, it is. And I do want to let you know that Shannon Baird is collecting all that great information for the PTO. Obviously, I don't put all that in here, but there's a link there that she has, so if you're interested, it's just a slideshow of all the great work that each teacher who wants to contribute does contribute, so. Thank you.
Thanks, so we'll move on to five point three, which is operations and maintenance in the three or five-year plan.
All right. I printed one out, I don't know.
I hope you guys have a, I only have a digital copy, but...
I have a digital copy.
Which, of course, my drive just lost, so let me pull it back up, I apologize for that.
Somebody told me my hard topic, they need one.
Alan might.
It's coming.
Okay, I'll grab it.
Okay. All right.
The roof is in Tom one, nine point two.
Five million.
So built into that, even looking at that, I can see, yeah, that would be good to kind of separate those out in terms of that voted article. So we've got two pages, you know, the first page or the top, if you've got it on a single page, kind of highlights the investments we're making this year. A total of about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, including a hundred thousand from construction fund, which was used for developing the Snelling Playground. And then you can see how we're breaking out the remainder sixty-eight thousand, which is pretty standard. That's been our investment capital for the five years I've been here. I don't have a lot of data going before that, but typically, it's in the fifty, sixty-thousand-dollar range. You know, really, the work that we're trying to accomplish this year with the dedicated funds, this is all budgeted this year, is getting some work that needs to be done, and looking ahead, trying to look at what are the efficiencies we can build in the kitchen? So getting a natural gas line, if you talk to Dave Kelly, really, our biggest area of potential payback is some of the electrical appliances that we have operating in our kitchen right now that are convertible to natural gas. But you can see, we're dedicating five thousand to some design work, because really, we're cautious about throwing money at a specific appliance, knowing that down the road, really over the next five years, what we're proposing is some substantial work in there that does some reorganization. We hate to kind of pigeonhole ourselves. So, so we want that layout of, here's where we're going, and we've got a firm out of Boston that Doran Whittier connected with us. He came by and gave us a pro bono kind of startup and said, here are some ideas, and plan to follow up and get a comprehensive plan from him, which is everything from serving areas to, you know, that, really that back area. That's their expertise. They, they were down working on the Middlebury Cafeteria and happened to swing by for us. That's how we got tied in with them. So that's this year, and the big push is looking at, if you look at two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we pushed it all the way out to two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. What you can see is what we are proposing is a substantial bump in our investment in capital. And not, not a small, but significant increase, and kind of the assumption we put upfront, up top here, is that we know that there is a hundred and thirty thousand in debt payment coming off for next year. And as we look ahead, if we really want to deal with the deferred maintenance that is sitting there needing to be dealt with over the next five years, it's not going to happen at sixty thousand dollars a year. And that's really what got us in the situation we're in right now. And so, you know, we were, Dave and I were tasked with, can you come up with a comprehensive plan that can move this forward over five years? You can see, well, still even looking out, there's still almost half a million dollars in deferred maintenance out there, even if we make the significant investment. But what we're talking about doing next year would be starting in the kitchen, moving the air handler unit to the roof. The timing of that is timed, that that could happen while the bond was, the bond work was happening on the roof, so again, we're not punching into a new roof later. We, we think most of these things have some potential tie-ins in terms of if the bond passes, these are standalone prices that Dave has calculated, there are probably savings built in for things like replacement of the main electrical panel. We're going to be doing electrical work anyways within the DNE wings. Why would we wait to do that electrical panel if we could fund it at the same time and get those efficiencies? The clock and bell system, the pneumatic controls. The other investment we're looking at is, we know we have some similar problems in terms of acoustical issues in every B-wing kiva. The conversation I typically have is, I, I talk about the kivas as kind of unused real estate. If you look at them, we try to use them for small group instruction, we try to use them as breakout spaces. We have teachers who would love to have us put up doors. If we would put up doors tomorrow, they would just be ecstatic. But then alls we've done is further isolated that space to become less useful. And so what we'd be looking at investing is Doran Whittier's rough number is about ten thousand dollars. That's a very high figure, but that would come up with a substantial design for all of these kivas that would completely rebuild them and bring them up to twenty-first century standards, so that we're not doing what we did over the years with the DNE wing, whereas, let's build a wall here, let's build a wall here, let's, let's try to contain it and not deal with the real issue.
So seventy grand just gets the design work.
The seventy, the seventy grand gets the, ten grand gets the design work.
Oh, okay.
Not seventy.
And what are we thinking about in terms of actual, so I, that work isn't included in?
The work is in it. Is laid out over the next five years, and the rough estimate that Dor and Whittier suggested is coming in at a hundred and seventy dollars per square foot. Those are eight hundred square-foot kivas, so roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars invested per...
That's where the one forty K, yes, exactly.
That's where the one forty K comes from, spread over to do all five kivas over five years.
Yep, okay.
And then you can see what's also laid out over the next five years are other substantial things that haven't been dealt with. We've got some exterior doors that are not included, that was one thing that was stripped out of the bond to get the cost reduction, so those still need to be replaced. It's a set of about, there, there are three separate door entryways that are nineteen sixty-seven vintage. We'd start having some investment in the kitchen, about a hundred and five thousand dollars is what they estimate over a couple of years to get all appliances up to speed. Then it's things like the gym floor, some asphalt paving. We've still got some locker room air handler units that are really our last, as they're incredibly inefficient, but you know what? We don't spend a lot of time in the locker rooms. So if we're going to ignore some air handler units, those are probably the ones to ignore. And so this is our starting point, this is meant to start a conversation, but it's kind of an answer to what Dave and I, Dave and I thought we were asked to kind of come forward with, to start the conversation about our long-term capital plan.
If I look at FY eighteen and FY nineteen?
You have two line items that are steamer ovens, replace grease traps, per funds available, one's forty-five, and then the next year it's sixty.
Yeah.
What's going on there?
What that is, is we know it's about a hundred thousand dollar investment to do all of that work, and what I was trying to do was keep the cost at roughly two hundred and ten, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which is the hundred and thirty from the bond, the sixty-eight that currently exists, and the additional savings that will be the revenue that's going to be generated by our investment from the solar, so the savings from electrical would be shifted there. That's roughly about the amount of money available. So, I mean, I guess we could put a hundred and five in a single year, but...
I just wanted to make...
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
It's less confusing if you just say that it's a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar line item. I don't think it's effective to say that it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars saved from the expiring bond, because we're using that argument on the whole voted article for nine point two five, so...
bond because we're using that argument on the whole voted article for 9.25, so.
Right.
Let's just concentrate on, these are, these are num, these are the numbers that will affect the budget. And what, you have your calculator here. What's, what's, what's 280? What's the percentage of 280 over 13 million? Using our.
Probably right about 2%.
Yeah.
The 2% investment.
Budget cap for our.
There it is.
It's 2.1. There it is. You're right. So that's, that's what's going to, unfortunately, that's what's going to be challenging is.
Right.
Where does that 280 come from when we have a 3.5% increase in salaries over the next three years? We know that and.
And the healthcare at 7. something.
Yeah, so.
Seven eight nine.
Yep.
Yeah. It's, it's just, I mean, it's interesting to look at the Kivas and say, you know, half of a house for each Kiva in order to flatten it out and put some walls in, but I understand there's a lot of work going on there. There's another thing in here about DE wing. Just at the end of '17, D and E renovation project funding with GMP loan. What is?
Ah, okay.
Is that lighting?
Yep, that's a lighting piece that, thank you for, for clarifying that because that was one that Bob just found out information for us on is, remember the lighting project we did two years ago in the B wing? We renovated all the lighting, went to more efficient, lower ballast, fewer tubes, that was funded with a Green Mountain Power interest-free loan that basically was paid back with the savings. We've got about $70,000 worth of work yet outside of the D and E wing, which is primarily all the administrative offices and C wing. And we thought we could do that for $70,000. When this was published on Thursday, on Friday, we were informed by Green Mountain Power, those funds are exhausted and no longer available. So there are no zero-interest loans available. So it's work that, when I asked Dave today, he's like, absolutely, this is probably the highest payback of any investment we could make in the building in terms of cost savings. He still would advocate doing it. It complicates it not doing it, not having a zero-interest loan to do it. So I think that changes the conversation about next year substantially in terms of that priority.
Do you just have fewer, fewer lights in?
Yeah.
It's interesting. I mean, some of the, I know that there are businesses out there that basically do, you know, I mean, I think the work you guys did with Kilowatt, you know, was basically cost savings based. And I know there are other infrastructure-based organizations, say, if hail kind of do hardware switches free because we got such old, lousy equipment that I know that when I replace it, it's going to save you X percent. I'll do it for free and I'll just take a portion of the savings, a little bit like the topic of the solar thing. So I don't know what equipment would qualify. I don't know if any equipment would qualify, but I think it's probably worth our exploring some of those pieces. You know, Tovan Galvin may know, he's in that business. I, you know, I don't know if Kilowatt Kaiser's still around. Well, Rocco is still local, you know, he may well be a good resource for, for that sort of stuff. But, you know, to the extent that we could from a, you know, if, if you can, you know, operationalize the expense and take a portion of the savings, then.
And you don't have that much.
Yeah, exactly. Then it makes a lot easier, even if you're paying here to, you know. So, you know, I think in some very interesting, I mean, again, I think it's very topical conversation because obviously I think one of the things people are saying is, you know, hey, how come we haven't made these great investments over time? And so this is, this is absolutely the right thing to do. And, you know, I think from a budgetary standpoint, that's, you know, that's our challenge is how do we, how do we, you know, do, you know? The, the desire is there, the need is there, and we'll just see how it shakes out, you know, in the longer term.
Certainly that one. Know a lot more than we see baseline.
Yeah.
Yeah, which.
Yeah, thank you. Running together, and Dave, how do you say as well?
All right. Any other questions? No? Okay. All right. So go to 5.4, which is CSSU debrief. We had a presentation on personalized learning plans, which was informative. I thought that was a great, great presentation. We did talk a little, touched, touched on the allowable growth percentage, had a discussion about SU Purchase Services, which we'll talk about more. Really, that was it. We didn't really have anything.
Well, Cindy talked a bit about the B, B-high expiration and what's going to happen there. I guess there's still a lot up in the air. Kathy attended the forum that was held at the, up on, in Williston, on Williston Road. But the, the reason it's important is because it will open up the labor contracts, all the labor contracts. And it'll have to be reratified. Is that right?
Well, our labor contract ends 2017.
Oh, and that's.
That's the date.
But that's teachers, but the sports staff.
But the sports staff, exactly right. So we had a lot of people there. Kathy did represent you, but that's what Cindy was present, was reporting out on. So we had at least 20 people there from Chittman South, staff, teachers.
But it still, it sounds like it's still very much up in the air.
It's up in the air and there's a lot of education that needs to happen. There were a lot of people that were like, you could tell, clearly surprised by what they were hearing, so. Yeah, I think there'll have to be a few cycles of these kind of workshops for people, bringing people together to hear, okay, so what does this mean?
Move on to discussion matters and 6.1, the budget. First article, which is SU Purchase Services. And there was a discussion at CSSU about Purchase Services. I, I don't see any real need to deviate from the model of purchasing everything that was noted on that. Do you guys, you know, food service? Supposed, you know, obviously, all of them.
Yeah, I mean, consolidation sounds like, you know, purchasing.
Yeah.
Power equals efficiency equals costs, all that.
My boss always done a very good job of.
Yeah, more power, more power to it. Yeah, absolutely.
So I think, I don't think we have any problem. I guess next month we would act on going in for, going to purchase services, reratifying our agreement to purchase those services again. 612, the budget forum preparation, so that's on November 10th. I guess, will we have a baseline by then? We won't, we won't get that till later in the month.
No, I don't think so. I hope they have an explosion, right?
So we'll just go through the usual presentation on school population.
Feature program. Yeah. And solicit hopes and dreams. And that's frustrates some people because they want a, you know, blind item discussion, but I think we frame it right.
Yeah. I wonder what numbers we can bring to that presentation or anything, but that's going to be, I don't know if you were here for the very beginning of our meeting, but we're going to do that in conjunction with our Act 46 forum.
Okay.
And so we'll do the forum first and then we'll do the budget presentation. Do that in the cafeteria.
Okay. We need any support from us around the Act 46 or just?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so. Not yet. So. Budget buddy?
Just in terms of promoting it, in terms of getting word out? Because everything we put out so far has talked specifically budget, you know, PTO meeting, budget forum. Do you want us to just kind of amend it to be?
Yeah.
Act 46, I think. Do you want the words consolidation? Do you want?
No, it's a presentation.
Study committee.
Yeah, very important.
46 Study Committee. There was a lot of conversation about that.
So it's the Act 46 Study Committee. The Lose Local Control Committee. Yes. Well, it depends if you want the crowd.
Which will be followed by the Define Local Control Contest.
Yeah.
The Closer School Committee? Should we rename that? No. No, obviously. All right, so Act 46 Study Committee report.
Yeah.
Or forum.
Forum.
Okay.
Budget buddies. I think I've got Fran, Barb Como, and of course, Alice Brown.
I haven't talked to John yet.
Just let me know. PTO, just, I think right now we're just looking for two staff members, so.
And is John one of those staff members? Is that what you're talking about?
No, John Harris, a community member, so.
The question came up because the Unified Arts Teachers were interested in having a representative, and is it budget buddy? Budget buddies need to be Shelburne residents, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. So I think we've got some Unified Arts Teachers who are Shelburne. I just thought that was the defining factor. There were some folks who thought they could.
It's a Shelburne budget.
Right. So, okay.
Okay. Thanks for visiting. Good to see you.
Come again.
I definitely will. Have a good night.
So would you like recommendations, kind of? How would you like to handle getting those?
I, I would just, you know.
Do you want us to tap on some shoulders?
You don't even need to do that. Ask somebody to volunteer, you know, ask if there are any volunteers. You don't need to, I wouldn't want someone to say, I was asked to be this, you know. It won't, you know, I've asked a few folks and I haven't gotten any. I guess our budget process is so exciting. It's not beating down the doors, but.
Special notes.
Yeah, we can put it in.
Are we still waiting for the first thing in the morning or?
No, four o'clock in the afternoon.
So we don't have to serve coffee or anything?
No, we don't. We don't, we're going to.
Alice doesn't have to make us any.
No. She's going to make cookies with zucchini in them instead of muffins with zucchini.
That may be, that, that may be part of the, a little more challenging for staff at the end of their long day, but.
Yeah, well, get in line.
Yep.
So.
I agree.
So we'll just keep reaching out for those. 6.2, policy. Anybody have any discussion issues on the two policies that are up? No? Okay. 6.3, I know exactly what we're doing for our next board's corner. And I know who's going to write it. His name is Matt Wormser.
Oh, really?
And he's going to write an article after November 4th about our new solar panels that were, you probably have the whole thing drafted already.
I got it, I got it. Cut and paste from the internet.
Yeah.
Yep, right there.
Sound good?
Yeah, no good, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah. You volunteered to do it at one point in the last few weeks. I just thought I'd go.
I was surprised what I volunteered for.
Yeah.
I can't quite remember.
So, and then, so could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. All those in the affinity consent agenda?
Hi.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Confirm our next meeting date, November 17th. Bob Finn and Matt Wormser are currently making travel plans to travel on 16th and return on the 18th. So.
There is a slim chance I may be traveling.
There's a, there's not, there's a slim chance you're not traveling.
But that's what phones are for.
I know, I know. Merger committees, continue, policy committees, board chairs, budget committee. The budget committee, that's been, I don't, actually, we may not have that, but that's been really interesting in trying to work through the baseline budget.
Is anyone invited to that?
Anyone is invited. I've been going.
Yeah.
I got confused and missed the first half hour of it last time, but, but it happens. But it's been a good talk and it's further evidence that everyone wants to talk about